Look at maybe what's the root of some of the issues. Looking at behavioral health and substance abuse problems and how do we better resource those areas in our community. The Quality of Life Group took a look at neighborhood safety and how do we do things that create healthy neighborhoods and engage citizens for relating to public safety issues. So, a few, I guess, themes if you will. And then the section with local government services, just to highlight a couple of things that I think of interest to the county. The group really noted that there's strength in the degree of collaboration we have in this part of the world with, between different governmental entities, and they felt like that's something they want to see continue and expand even further. The one item that we heard from several presenters when we asked for trends and events early in the process was that the funding mechanisms, especially for counties, are really insufficient at this point in time. And so if you look at, the first goal in the local government services, one of the action items is working with state legislators to make sure that there's a fair, adequate funding mechanisms. So I think that those are some goals that definitely hit home as you're looking at the different needs that the county is tasked with addressing. And what we envisioned with this report, the Sioux Falls Tomorrow is a process, it's not a group. It was seven entities that came together to sponsor it. It's not going to get all these things done. It is simply recommending what the community, the people of this community feel is important. And the hope is that as policies are made, this can be a tool to decide where is the community coming down on certain issues, what are priorities? As nonprofits consider programming, what are things that they may take on? A couple of examples of, I think, how this can work well. The Community Foundation is committed to doing a workshop next fall that's going to focus on cultural competencies. So as we become a more diverse community, how do we work better, live better with each other? United Way has already said that they're going to look at some of the mental health programs in other communities that were recommended in this report and bringing them to Sioux Falls, and also looking at outcomes measurement. How do we evaluate the effectiveness of nonprofits and the work that they're doing here in the community? So, a few, I guess, examples right off the bat of how we see this being implemented, but our hope is that other groups are going to find their piece as they do their work and run with different pieces of it. So, I'd love to take questions today or any other time if you have any about the process or the final report.
Any questions for Andy?
Madam Chair. Mr. Patterson, I'm looking at this report, it's pretty interesting, but as far as implementing some of the thoughts that are in it, where are we at with that? Is this going to be just left on the table, gathering dust, or?
Sure. Well, as I said, you know, the Sioux Falls Tomorrow Group isn't going to be the implementers. What we hope to do is to share this broadly and so that different groups know what's contained in here and use that as they would develop policy, maybe at this group, the city level. The Steering Committee, when we met and finalized the report, has agreed that we're going to meet next March for the first time and then a minimum every two years to evaluate how these different areas have been addressed. And to the extent that one area hasn't been addressed, that group may reach out to kind of spur some action. But at the same time, the success or accomplishment, in 10 years we look back and a lot's done, it's going to be dependent upon the community and different groups running with pieces in this report. So I guess it's our job to hold it up high and make sure people know what was stated in there.
Are we reaching out to legislators and stuff?
There's a group that is planning to work on that, to reach out to legislators and make them aware of what's in here as well.
Commissioner Kelly?
Can I make a comment on it also? Early on, before we really got started, Mike Cooper and I met for lunch and just went over the previous Sioux Falls Tomorrow plan. And through that, Jeff, we had accomplished almost 80 percent, probably would that be a fair figure, of what was in that plan had been accomplished in a 10-year period. So, maybe those plans, maybe those ideas, those goals were, you know, natural, but it was interesting how much of it had been completed. And so I think by, it just naturally does, I think we've got an obligation as a governing body to look to this plan occasionally and say, if we're going to do something, you know, say, how does it fit into that plan? Because this is pretty representative, I think, of the community's thinking. And if we're indeed to represent what the community wants, this plan needs to be the entities, the city council, ourselves, the sheriff's office, the state's, all these people have to look back to this plan to see if we're not going the right direction, we would see it. But it was just interesting, it just naturally occurred, and whether they looked at the plan or not, I don't know, but it just, those things did get accomplished. Event Center was one of them, but there were a lot of things in there that we just went over and went, hmm, we already did this, hmm, we already did this.
Any questions for Andy? Commissioner Barth?
So, Commissioner Kelly, do you think that there are some items in this that are, you know, fairly certain of getting, of moving forward? You know, in a sense, maybe we're describing the wave and then riding the wave to success.
Well, one example would be like in city planning, in our comprehensive county plan, that, you know, we want to make sure it represents not only what the planners think, but also what the people think about the county or the city. So yeah, I do think, I do think it has an effect. You'll note in your several comments about crime, and the basis is, people are concerned about the increased level of crime, and there's, you know, we need to do something about it. I think that will come about, I think, in the attitude of what we have. You know, obviously, you put more cops on, you're going to end up in more jail cells. So, you know, there's that balance that we have to figure out, but the fact remains that there's something, mental illness became a very big factor, what we were talking about when we did it. That came, we had the sheriff's, on our social services, we had a deputy, we had a police officer. So it was a good representative group. Yeah, I do, in answer to your question, I think yes. I think it will happen.
Commissioner Bennigan?
I'd just make one comment about the mental health issue. We just recently did some surveys with our own organization, with the home delerd individuals that we serve, and based on those early studies, if you will, almost 50 percent of those individuals had some diagnosis or some related issues with mental health concerns, specifically depression and some other things that affect their quality of life. And I think that those kinds of things are opportunities for all of us, as an organization, as a government, as a community, to look for answers because frankly, if they're not identified and people don't understand what the problem really is, they make some assumptions that generally aren't correct. But right now, we've highlighted those issues, and I think that for nonprofits specifically and for the government, to do long-range planning and strategic planning is our responsibility to make those things change. So, the whole group that's worked on this, whether it's the first Sioux Falls Tomorrow or the second or the third or whatever, I think you do have to have the community involved. And the only way you get a community involved is to do these kinds of researches, if you will, and make people aware of what the problems are, because there are people in the community that will take those up and make sure that those don't go away until they're solved.
Any questions for Andy? Thank you, Andy, for leading this up and for all the people that did put time and energy in, Mark, that did put time and energy into working this, because there's a volunteer board and a lot of hours went into making this project. So, thank you, Andy. Good morning.
And I'm Chair Mark Lee with the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Forward Sioux Falls in this instance. To address the question on the utilization of the document or the plan itself and the process, obviously, we were actively engaged in the process. But as we look forward to the next Forward Sioux Falls campaign, which is really only a couple of short years away potentially, we have already begun to study and analyze what's in this. We're looking forward to the downtown development plan, we've got the cultural plan, we've got the transit study that's going to be unveiled to the city council today, the workforce development activities that the governor has sponsored, and we're taking all of those planning activities so that we have a baseline of things that maybe can be used in the next Forward Sioux Falls campaign, too. Not all of them obviously fit within kind of the bailiwick of economic development, job creation, those sorts of things that you're used to seeing in Forward Sioux Falls, but clearly, we're going to use this as a baseline to start from. And there are two sections in there, economic vitality and education, that come to play very specifically in Forward Sioux Falls initiatives in the past and will likely be there in the future. So yes, we're paying great attention to it and we're going to use this plan, it's not just going to sit on a shelf for us.
Thanks, Mark. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so move on. Thank you.
Item number 11 is consider a motion to appoint Jed Huesman as the county representative to the Sulan Library Board of Trustees. Jeff Barth, or Ken McFarland?
Somebody.
Commissioners, as you know, Minnehaha County is entitled to a citizen appointment on the Sulan Library Board of Trustees. We current, the current county representative on that is Ms. Kim Rigner, and she has moved from the rural areas of Minnehaha County. She's a Hartford resident and has moved to Sioux Falls, and so she felt it was appropriate that she should step down and we should have a representative, you know, on the board that is outside of the Sioux Falls area. In response to that, we did issue a press release seeking applications from those citizens who are interested in serving on this board, and we did get an application from Jed J. Huesman from Brandon. I think a lot of you know who Jed is. Jed is a former finance director in the county, and he's been active in local issues for a number of years. And so, we've discussed this with Commissioner Barth, who is the liaison to the library board, and so we bring forward the name of Jed Huesman for the appointment to this position. The current county position on the board, Kim's term expires in May of 2016, and so we'll have to take an action. This is to fill that unexpired term, and then we'll take an action at a later date. And that's all.
Any questions about Ken on this appointment?
Madam Chair. Just would say that I've not been on the library board that long myself, but when we had a board meeting in Brandon, Jed came by without, this is a couple of months ago, before there was any opening on it, and he actually sat in with the meeting on his own without any encouragement.
Look for a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second?
A motion and a second to approve the appointment to the library board. All those in favor, say aye. Ayes opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ken.
Item 12 is a discussion to identify and establish legislative priorities in preparation for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Annual Convention. Ken McFarland?
Commissioners, as you know, the bylaws of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners require that any resolutions that either the counties or the district association of counties want to include for consideration in the legislative platform that will be discussed at the annual convention in September, needs to be adopted and forwarded to the association offices, not later than August 1st. And that, once those resolutions reach the association's office, then the Resolutions Committee takes a look at those, and they will meet and vet those resolutions, and they will either accept or reject some of those resolutions that will go to the full body. As you know, last year, we utilized pretty much a very similar process. Early in the month of July, we scheduled an opportunity for you to have an open discussion about legislative items that you consider to be important enough that you would direct staff to draft the resolutions that need to be done for consideration at another meeting later in July that you would make a final decision on. Once I get some feedback from you and what those topics will be, again, I'll do the resolutions and bring them back to you, and then we'll forward them to the SDACC office. We have notified department heads that we are in this process as well and have asked for their input on any items that are coming out of their departments that they feel that we need to take legislative action on. And as a matter of course, in my private discussions with some of you, some of the topics that have already, again, risen to the top are things such as the, something with the alcohol tax because of the impact that that has on county budgets, another try at an adjustment on the property tax limitation because of the stress that our general fund is under. And then, of course, we've been following very, very closely the work of the interim committee on highway funding. A number of you testified in front of that committee when it was here in Sioux Falls. And, you know, we don't have a, we haven't seen any specific things that come out of that committee yet, but I know there was a very passionate plea by the chair of the committee that we, local governments, get behind anything that comes out of that committee and that for adoption. So, those, again, are some of the topics that have come to the forefront. I know some of you have got some other ideas that you were hoping to discuss, but again, this is just the beginning of the process. We don't have all the answers yet, but once you identify some certain topics, and you have now until the end of the month, for me to help to craft those resolutions for consideration at a later date. And that's all. We just wanted to give you the opportunity to start the process.
Any comments? Dick?
You know, and I'm going to be on the Resolutions Committee, so it'll be the first time in a long time we've had any representative there. I got it, because nobody else wanted it. But I think we need to find a common, our goals have got to have a common thread with other counties. I think too often, there's, oh, that's Minnehaha County, that's a whole different deal. And we've got to find an area that's affecting all counties. I think the crime side of it is probably, financing the criminal side of the counties is probably becoming more and more of an issue, especially with state's attorney, because most of them have, what, just part-time, there's only a couple of us that have full-time state's attorneys. So, when you're thinking of things, just, I know there's specific issues, and in departments there's specific issues, but we need to, we need to have something that we get a buy-in from the rest of the group. I think there's, what, eight on that group or something like that? And, you know, most of the representatives, a rural county of 2,000 people has the same vote as Minnehaha County with 180 or whatever it is. So, think, do it while you're thinking, while you're doing these things, just kind of find a common thread with other counties to get a buy-in by them. I hope we keep at the fewer rather than the more. It's kind of a philosophical thing, but I think last year, we went in with just a few and got shot down on almost all. And the other thing is, if you scatter shoot, you're going to get some of them through. But we've got some really important ones that I think need to be addressed, and that's what we should concentrate on.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, I totally agree with Commissioner Kelly, and I wish him luck. Feel free to buy the other members of the committee anything that they need in order to get their votes. But I am disappointed, actually, though, that, again, our state association has not supported Minnehaha County to the extent we have. We've had issues that affected just like one county in the state. I think it was Chan County and Fall River County wanted to be able to bank two counties away because there were no banks in their own county that they could bank at, and they didn't want to go to the one bank in the next county. So we support them on these kinds of things that only affects one county. And when it comes to something for us, then they say, well, it only affects one county, so, you know, forget it. And I am sick of that attitude, and I think that, you know, potentially, they need to be, this has to be explained to these people. And even when we talked about, what was a dime a drink a few years ago, a commissioner from Bennett County who was upset that Minnehaha County would get $600,000 and they would only get $30,000. They were ready to file bankruptcy last year, and we wrote letters on their behalf. Now, maybe why not just tell them to go to hell, but we didn't. But they tell us regularly where to go, and I think it's time that we assert ourselves. Maybe one vote and all that stuff, but, you know, maybe it's time that we used other things that are under our control.
Commissioner Kelly?
Jeff, the one thing is, I think, and, you know, the art of politics is the art of compromise, but we, you know, we can play tough guy, but the structure says right now, one vote, one county. And so I think we have to be careful to, we're not going to get support if it's, if it presumed to be just a Minnehaha County deal, we're just not going to get it.
They don't support us already.
I know that, I know that, and that's the problem.
So they're withdrawing what they're not giving us?
So, we can continue to be the, you know, to do the, hold the, you know, show them our strength, and it isn't going to do any good, I'm afraid.
We could always withdraw our membership. We could actively campaign against what they want, but they do.
And, you know, I think that's something that we take up with Bob Wilcox and say, listen, you know, here, but if I go into Resolutions Committee and say, you know, if we don't get our way, we may withdraw, they're going to say goodbye.
I think we're straying from the topic slightly. Are there any other comments about resolutions?
I think we should come up with a few here. I know that the idea that we have these restricted pots of money that we can't use for things, whether it's the 24/7 money or the highway money, what if Walmart had a policy that all the money from chewing gum had to go into a special fund and couldn't be spent on anything except chewing gum? That would be ridiculous, that's no way to run a business. Where you've got more, you borrow from there and use it where you have needs. I think, I think the property tax limitation clearly ought to be on our list. I think alcohol probably should not be, because that appears to be hopeless. But I think we should all work on finding a list, and our department heads need to figure out what they need, whether it's egg valuations or stuff like that.
I would like to see us continue to work on the funding side of it, because leaky faucet gets fixed. And if we do this for 10 or 15 years, maybe they'll finally listen that counties, not only Minnehaha County, are suffering on the funding side. And if they would fund even our general fund adequately, maybe we wouldn't have problems in our highway fund. And if they would quit siloing things and take us as responsible elected officials as they think they are, maybe we wouldn't have all these issues. They know they can make good decisions, why do they think we can't make good decisions with our money? So, I think we should continue hammering on funding.
Any other comments?
I agree.
Commissioner, Beckett?
Well, leadership comes in a variety of ways, and in the absence of true leadership, whatever is there will fill the void. And it's unfortunately fallen on a lot of the shoulders of the commissions around the state, because every time we go to the legislature, the legislature's very frank and candid response, going back over 10 years, their response has always been, because the people there 10 years ago are gone. They know we have financial problems, they've been turned out, or they've flipped other houses, and they're playing the game. The reality is that our only option that they always run back to is opt-out. You guys want it, opt-out. Raise taxes.
The problem with that is that the state of South Dakota has money, the cities have money, many other places have money, and so it's easy for them to say, opt-out, where we're increasing people's taxes, the burden lays on us, but yet there's money in this state that's come from tax collections that is not flowing evenly.
Exactly. And so when we go back and we look at all the different times we've opted out, and I know I'm sounding just like Jeff Barth here, saying, we got to opt-out, but I'm just pointing out that in the last couple of times that we have opted out, not even a petition's been taken out. So, you know, the reality is that when we make a decision that we have to raise funds, the leadership is coming, but it's at this level, it's not at the state. They're kicking the can down to us, saying, do something about it. And I'll give you an example. The jail, that jail is a classic example. Two more floors on that courthouse is another example. But some counties get special dispensation from the state when they need help with their courthouses, we shoulder it here in Minnehaha County. So, we don't just talk the talk, but we walk the walk. So, you want leadership, it's right here at the state.
The difficult thing with the opt-out, and I hope people will remember, when the opt-out was first coming, came into play, I mean, the opt-out was really, was really sold as, if you need to do something special within your county, you have that ability to do that if your local people make the decision to opt-out. And when they talked about, if you need a new jail, if you need, the problem with that line of thought now is that we're not talking about an opt-out for things that are special or something above and beyond, you know, a basic need. We are at the point now, and counties are across the state, that they are opting out because they can't meet their basic operating expenses that they have. We're not talking about something as a special want, you know, for that particular county, you know, that, well, then do an opt-out. We are talking operational costs, basic operational needs, is what counties are facing when they're talking opt-outs now. And that, and so, and those needs are just far outstripping the amount of revenue that are coming into the counties for this. I mean, even the Sioux Falls Tomorrow program recognizes that counties are shouldering an unfair burden. We just are. And that, and there has to be a connection between our local legislatures and our local units of government to help address that need, and right now, I don't believe that that local connection exists.
I would agree with what he just said.
But this issue has existed for 20 years now.
That's why we're the drippy faucet, and we continue to complain loudly.
My point is, it isn't working. And I don't know what the alternative is, but we need to rethink this thing, because the other 65 counties perceive Minnehaha County as its own little entity as far as financing. And so, that's the problem we run into when we try and get strong support out of the pier. And our own legislators, and this has gone on for years, our own legislators' attitude towards counties is not, you know, they don't care, or, I don't, that isn't fair to say, but they really are not aware of the problems. I don't know, I think the only way we can solve some of it is one-on-one with legislators. You know, you've got to take a guy and corner him and say, here, and take him to lunch or something. The way we got shot down by appropriations was just incredible.
I was going to mention this under liaison reports, but I did have Ken send out an email yesterday to all our, a letter, whichever, to all of our legislators, inviting them to come to our budget hearings this week. There had been some comments when they rejected our proposal last year, or this January, that they were interested in our budget hearings, so they've all been invited, we'll see if anyone comes. And, Dick, I think your idea of going to coffee with them is a great idea. I think that we should, as responsible commissioners, start making appointments, we can divvy them up or whatever, and make appointments with them and talk to them about our problems, because if they're not willing to listen to us up in pier, maybe we need to get them at home.
And if you do it, talk about it at liaison reports. I mean, let the rest of the commission know that you met with so-and-so, or you had coffee with so-and-so. So we don't redundant, we're not redundant, we've got, what, 15, I don't know, 20, I don't know how many representatives we've got in Minnehaha County.
We have eight legislative districts, so we have, you know, two legislator, two House members and a senator from each one, so.
A lot of people.
Twenty-four in Minnehaha County.
Any other comments?
It's a tough story to explain, I mean, there's so many parts of it. The fact that Pennington County has a budget $10 million more than ours means that they, well, they have, for example, three people doing elections, our auditor has one. They have resources that we don't have. Maybe we should just opt-out for $10 million and come up to an equal status with them and be, and see what we can afford.
I think we're done? All right, thanks, Ken.
Again, you know, my hope is, is that we will bring these to, at the last meeting of July, and that the resolution for consideration, and that, and then that'll give us enough time to forward those to meet the deadline for the association, which is again, August 1st. So, we hope to keep this discussion going. Department heads and individual commissioners, if you have specific ideas, we will craft the resolution, because they all require a resolution adoption to be considered by the association, and then you can decide which ones you would like to move forward on.
Can I ask you a quick question, Madam Chair? Do you mind? In our budget deliberations, we have requests for like $6 million right this year.
A little over six.
And so to.
New requests.
To make it to where we need to be, we need to cut to about $2.5 million is.
Again, there's a couple, that those increases are in too. Again, there's a couple, those increases are in two main areas. And that they are in, of course, the general fund, which is our main operating fund, and then there's a large increase in the highway fund. And that anticipates, you know, some, a large expenditure of cash there. And that, so if we're talking the general fund, which is the main operating account, we estimate that in order to meet that budget with the existing revenue that we have, and depending what you may want to do on some payroll issues, and that you would need to cut out of this current budget about $2.5 to $3 million, and that in order to meet that general fund revenue projection. And that particularly as it applies to the amount of cash that we want to commit to help support that budget, the infamous cash apply. So $2.5 to $3 million is what we would need to do in the general fund alone. And that, so, and then you need to make the decisions, of course, relative to some of those outlays and those special funds that you talked about, such as the highway.
Okay.
And the building fund, et cetera, because that has an increase in it as well. So.
All right. Think we're ready to move on?
Item 13 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports?
Madam Chair, just quickly, the homeless advisory board met yesterday, and coming up, there's some meetings with the proposed bishop's house going forward. I think there's something on the 14th, or something over at that location.
Maybe the 22nd? There's two dates.
Anyway, so that's a positive step in that whole thing. And they expect to be actually operating sooner than I expected, so we'll see how that goes. We also had a meeting with a woman from pier, talking about keeping the records on homelessness. And for her, we're not getting any more money from the federal government, but the amount of paperwork reports is increasing. And I, it almost made me feel sympathy for the veterans' hospitals that are being forced to comply with all these statistics and stuff like this. Because, you know, Scotland, South Dakota, may not have a homelessness problem. They may have a domestic abuse problem, but, you know, they have to report to pier on what they're doing about homelessness. And they have no homeless issue, and they have no motivation, no motive to report on it. And yet, the feds are requiring this kind of stuff. It's dismal.
Any other reports? Item 14 is new businesses. Is there any new business? Item 15 is old businesses. Is there any old business?
Bill was here and then he left, but.
Oh, he's just walking down the hallway right now.
Yeah, I'd like to hear some comments about the, about the land out north and what the, that activity report didn't impress me very much. I know a piece of land like that takes a long time, but. Is he coming?
He's coming. Bill, Commissioner Kelly was just asking for your thoughts on the activity report from the Bender people on the land up north.
My thought?
Or lack of.
There appears to have been no activity whatsoever since, I think, May 5th.
I think that was a April-May report, or was it a May-June, June report?
Report received about two weeks ago for May and June. There was no, looked exactly like the May report, and the last activity was May.
Bill, have you heard from them at all?
No.
Is the museum board discussing this or talking about it at all, or?
Um.
This thing isn't going to get built until the land gets sold at a good price.
Yes, the museum board has had some discussions. I think there's several board members that are very concerned. And, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what to do about it. I'm not a realtor. I, I don't think we have any realtors on the board. I think Michelle Urbanbach, who's on our board, is concerned about lack of progress.
Well, and my point is not to criticize Bender.
No.
What bothers me is that there's no activity because there's no interest. And that, that does concern me. And I know it's still early in the process, but if there's only a couple, three buyers out there, and they may or may not know about it, I think there was a big concentration on a single buyer, and I don't know what's happening there. Either everything we thought was wrong or we're playing games. I don't know. I just, the lack of interest is what I think is some concern.
I think you just need to give it some time. This isn't a fire sale.
No, I'm not recommending that. I, but we've got to be realistic about what we're doing, too. They've got to be realistic.
Commissioner Barth?
Just for those people who are out there watching, the county has an acreage for sale up north for just less than $2 million. We'd like to get more, but if anyone's interested, call, call me. The other thing I would say is, I actually have had some interest in real estate myself lately in driving down some of our main drags. There's a lot of commercial property available that's vacant right now. On Minnesota Avenue, both sides of the road, you know, there's that KFC, for example, building that's for 1.2 million. There's a lot of, a lot of commercial property that's not occupied productively right now. And I don't know if that's normal. I've just been looking at it lately myself, and it's, I've been kind of surprised.
Any other old business?
I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session for contract negotiation, legal briefing, and I have a brief personnel issue.
That's my motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned.